Good afternoon. I call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commission Staff Meeting of May the 25th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And we also have with us our Clerk of the Board and the County Administrator. Welcome. We'll move right into the business ahead of us. And item one is a presentation by our financial advisor as we kick off a request for proposals for a new underwriting pool, following closely with the refunding of sales tax bonds. So welcome, Bethany Pugh.
Thank you. It's good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be with the Commission again to some familiar and some new faces as I realize I'm a familiar and new face to some of you as well. So to the Commissioners, Commissioner Reese, good to meet you, Commissioner DuMasse and Commissioner Dreehaus, good to see you again. I'm going to share my screen to walk through the presentation. And we'll see if this works. All righty, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Be very brief. I know there's other important matters for the public and others' consumption today. We're going to focus on just the first two sections of this presentation. One, I want to give you just a kind of recap of what may be new information for others, but just kind of detail from the background with PFM and our engagement with Hamilton County, which is actually about 25 years and counting at this point in time. The main topic of discussion today relates to the underwriter selection process. And we'll talk about what we're proposing and working with John Bruegen and Bond Counsel to the county on at this point in time to give you some background there as well as next steps. What I've provided and can go through at your convenience in one-on-ones or as just additional material should you have trouble sleeping this evening. There's additional information on underwriters considerations and they're talking about kind of size of underwriter pool, compensation and compensation structures, which will be things that we discuss with John and Jeff and Holly as we're kind of going through the transaction process, but this gives you a little bit of detailed information as it relates to that as well. In the appendices, we have more information on PFM or National Firm with a local presence. I'm based here in Ohio, have been for 22 years now. But gives you more background on the firm. In addition to specifics on the work that we have done with and had the pleasure to do for the county and with the county over the course of the 25 years. Give you a little bit of background on municipal advisors. That is our role with the county and that is a regulated role and a role in which we serve as fiduciaries to you. So there's a little bit of background information there. And then Appendix D is the rest of the team, PFM team that works with the county on a day-to-day basis. And then we have the requisite disclosures. So jumping right in, this first page, and I'm certainly not going to go through it all because we don't have that kind of time, just gives you kind of a high-level summary of some of the work and areas of focus over the course of our relationship, which began. So I guess it's 26 years in 1995. And that's largely been kind of a three-pronged, although we, you know, we've done a lot of different one-off analyses, financial analyses, financial planning and kind of blowing up the black box of unsolicited proposals, solicited proposals, so on and so forth. But in a large part, what we've worked on is debt transaction management and ongoing monitoring, including managing and working with you on managing your relationships with the credit rating agencies, both in the context of a transaction, but also in the context of in-between transactions. Financial analysis and modeling, financial planning, kind of helping thinking about how do you structure debt issuances, timing in the context of larger multi-year financial plans, or excuse me, capital improvement plans, so on and so forth. Done a lot of work on various facets as it relates to MSD, both in the context of ongoing financial planning assistance and helping you think through kind of necessary revenue rate increases on an annual basis and more broadly in negotiations with the city as well as in negotiations with the EPA as per the consent decree. I'll pause. Any questions? Okay, great. Current scope of services is kind of more of the same. We monitor and work on each of the debt transactions that you all do. So with respect to the general obligation credit, MSD sewer revenue bonds and sales tax revenue bonds and kind of everything in between. And in that capacity, reviewing underwriter proposals, solicited or unsolicited, doing various financial analyses on financial structures, products, so on and so forth, developing financial plans, including robust financial modeling, particularly as it relates to the work with MSD. And we also work, I guess I didn't note this, as financial advisor to the CFA, so kind of related entity. And I've already kind of walked through some of the MSD work. So that's kind of what we're currently focusing on. So, you know, we've been fortunate to be, I think, you know, viewed as an extension of staff of kind of all matters financial, financial analysis and financial planning for the county for quite some time. And that's a role that we're obviously very grateful and appreciative to have. Specifically, just give you a little bit of background on myself. So I'm your lead contact, your day-to-day contact. Although we have a team that supports the county and brings specialized expertise to various matters, particularly as it relates to MSD. I've been at PFM my entire post-college life, which is 23 years and counting. And I've been in Ohio, as I mentioned, 22 years. And I've worked specifically with the county since 2000. And ironically, it was in the context of working on an underwriter solicitation process. There was actually a RFP and we were the underwriter interviews and so on and so forth. I was obviously much younger and newer in my career, so I was doing more of the summarizing of proposals and things of that nature at that point in time. I lead all of our transactions. So I sure as a lead advisor in all the transactions. So when we did geo-bonds competitively not too long ago, myself and other team members assisted, working largely with John on that. Sales tax revenue bonds, which we'll talk about in a moment, because those are the bonds that are coming up next to be done, as well as the MSD debt. And there's a lot of analysis and financial planning work with respect to MSD as well that I'm heavily involved in. I already mentioned CFA. Just to give you a bit of a background, so I'm a managing director, which means I'm a partner at PFM, have been for 10 years. I lead our Ohio practice. So all of the, with some exceptions, with all the financial advisory clients that we have in Ohio are clients that I lead and manage on a day-to-day basis, including the City of Columbus, City of Toledo, Ohio Treasure State. It also says St. Louis MSD here, which is not in Ohio, but I'm actually originally from St. Louis. And that's actually not related to the reason why I manage that client, but it is one in my portfolio. And it clearly has relevance as it relates to comparables for MSD. Been in Ohio 20 years, founding member of the Ohio Chapter of Women in Public Finance, have worked or served on the National Board of Women in Public Finance. I've had the pleasure and I spent some time with Commissioner Dreehaus the last time that I actually traveled, which was March of 2020, going to the National Association of Counties and presenting with the Finance, Pensions and Intergovernmental Affairs Steering Committee. And I've done that quite a few times for them, in addition to working with the FOA and some other accolades that I won't go into. So that's my background. I'll stop there. Any questions? Okay. So now on to why we are here. And that's really to talk about the next step. We have, and the county has in the past, as I noted, done, you know, done underwriter RFPs. We're proposing to do a request for qualifications. We'll get into the specifics of that now to help you procure underwriting services. This is kind of a high-level graphic of all of the team members associated with executing on bond transaction. The kind of spoke in the wheel, as you would think about it, is obviously the county, because you are the issuer, the borrower of debt. And we see our role as really kind of standing side by side with you, facilitating everything that you would have us do and really serving as a spoke of the wheel to ensure that the transaction moves smoothly, that all of the team members have the information that they need to do their job and to support the transaction, a common goal, and to be successful in executing on the debt transaction. Not all these parties are parties to every type of transaction. That depends on specifics of it, whether it's a new money transaction, i.e. borrowing for new facilities, infrastructure, so have, so on and so forth, or doing a refinancing. Bond counsel, which obviously we work, the county works with Dent, Warren, Scholl. Underwriting, they're obviously purchase the debt from you and sell it to investors. So that's the role we're talking about at this point in time. Rating agencies, credit enhancers, kind of as the specifics of a particular transaction call for it. So type of bond sales. And the county has kind of availed itself in the past for various reasons of all different types of ways to sell bonds, to place bonds with investors. One approach is to do a competitive sale whereby, working with county staff, bond counsel, PFM as financial advisor, we structure the debt, we tell the market, in this case, investment banks show up at this date and this time, tell us what price you will buy the bonds at and highest price, lowest interest rate, lowest yield wins. That is the approach that we take for the county's geo-bonds. That is the approach for your policy that we anticipate taking going forward for your bonds. And that selection process, there isn't really a selection process with underwriters there. So that's kind of excluded from what we're talking about and what we will be talking about today. Then there's negotiated solicitation, which has traditionally been how you've placed both the sales tax revenue debt as well as the MSD sewer revenue bonds. And basically what that means is you select the underwriting syndicate and that just means the group of firms. Usually there's a leading firm or what's called a book-running senior manager. And that's the firm that's kind of at the table from beginning to end in the transaction. That's the firm that ultimately runs the books when it comes to the day of pricing, so on and so forth. But there are other firms that support them. And that's what we mean when we talk about an underwriting syndicate. And so again, as I mentioned, the sales tax bonds and the sewer system bonds have usually been placed that way, where you select your underwriting syndicate and you negotiate with them on the day of sale for the pricing of those bonds. Other types of ways to place debt, there's also what we call privately placed debt. It's when you don't publicly offer the bonds to essentially the public. You place it directly with an institutional or an educated investor or accredited investor. And we actually availed ourselves of that process back in 2019 to refund some sewer system revenue bonds for economic savings. And there was a lot of kind of particulars as it relates to the specifics at that time with respect to MSD that impacted the debt approach to placing debt. What's right in any particular circumstance is a confluence of a whole lot of factors, including this type of transaction, the credits that we're talking about, the transaction size, market volatility, a host of other factors that go into that decision-making process. So what we're here to talk about today is how do you go about the process of selecting an underwriter? And that is, at the end of the day, a policy decision. So there is no wrong or right way to do that. That's ultimately your decisions, the county's decision to do. But usually kind of falls into three categories. You can establish an underwriter pool. This is the approach that we're taking, and I think it makes a whole lot of sense. And so basically what you do is you qualify firms. They sit in your pool, so to speak. And within that pool, depending upon the transaction that's coming forth, you will pick members. So not everybody in the pool, but you will pick from that pool for the next transaction and develop an underwriting syndicate on a transaction-by-transaction basis. So what's contemplated here is that we would have a pool for a period of five years. And based upon the particulars of the transaction, the debt that you need to place, its size will determine how many underwriters you need in that particular syndicate. But you pick your syndicate for that, from that pool, as you need them for each transaction. And how do you select them? How do you qualify them for the pool? What you do is request for qualifications, which is the process that we're going to go through or that we're going to walk through in terms of timing, so on and so forth at this point in time. You could also do a request for proposals. The big difference there is you're really asking for specifics on, okay, we're going to place this debt or this group of or types of debt. How would you structure it? What's your fee, so on and so forth. So it's a more formal process. And some issuers do that on an issue-by-issue basis, or they could do that, you can do that as well over a multiple, multi-year period of time. And then ultimately, the other approaches, it's kind of anything you want. You can select a firm or a group of firms based upon relationships, other policy considerations that you have or other specific, you know, specifics to your transaction that are determining into that, to that, that come into play as it relates to how you think about that. So I'll talk about the pool process in a second, but bigger picture things to consider. And this is what we will be considering when we think about establish a pool and then think about who does the first underwriting syndicate need to be for the sales tax bonds that will be your next issuance, size of the transaction, the type of the credit that you're issuing, the experience of the particular firms. And experience really comes into play when we talk about who's going to be that senior managing underwriter, who's going to run the books. That's kind of the highest position within the syndicates. Think about it, it's kind of like the president of the syndicate. So that's really important. Other policy considerations, we want MBE, DBE, WBE, veteran-owned firms, locally-based firms in the pool or in the syndicate. Those are the types of things we'll be thinking about. Then we want to think about market considerations. If we're in a really volatile market, you're going to want a firm that's got a lot of market presence, got a lot of capitalization, will have the ability to take down bonds if it comes to that. And by take down, I mean hold them in their own inventory as opposed to, you know, underwriter's job is to buy it from you, sell it to somebody else. Well, if there's nobody else and we think we've got the right price, who's going to stand in the middle? Somebody has to have firm capital do that. And so firm capitalization, market presence. Do they have the kind of market presence with investors to really be firm in terms of pricing? Or are they the type of firm that doesn't have the leverage that you need or want your investment bank to have to be able to, what we think of, price aggressively or price appropriately your bond? So market considerations, all that goes into play. And then what are their distribution capabilities? Are they good distributing bonds to retail investors, institutional investors, so on and so forth? Let me pause there. Any questions?
Can I, Madam President, can I ask one question?
Sure.
So thanks, Bethany. It's good to see you. Thanks for all that you do for the county. I don't know how many times I've heard Jeff Aludo say, hold on, let's check in with Bethany and see what she thinks about this financial situation. So when you talked about establishing the poll, what is, if you know it, what is the industry standard for an organization like ours that establishes this poll and the timeframe related to that? Because I think you said it would be five years. Is that a standard industry practice or is that, you know, one or the other?
Well, I don't think there's a standard industry practice, but three to five years is typically the norm. Either if you're doing it on an RFP basis or an RFQ basis, establishing a pool. But three to five years is, because you don't want to be doing this every year. I don't personally have any clients that do RFPs every issue, thankfully, because that would be painful. But three to five years should use the sweet spot, five years. I mean, it has been, as I believe, it's probably been eight years since the last RFP that was exclusive to MSD. What we're proposing is to kind of do a more holistic approach, which is to establish a pool who will work on all of your credits. Now granted, there's really only two credits that you have unless something else comes up for other reasons. That would be that we would pick from the pool, that sales tax and sewer. And the large majority of those issuances over the next five years is going to be presumably for MSD. But it's been eight years, give or take, as I understand it, or as I recall. So five years, three to five years, I would suggest five years, just because three years goes by really fast.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, sorry. Okay, here we go. So what's in the RFQ? So we've asked firms, or we will be asking firms for a good deal of information. And we're going to be evaluating them on things like, you know, the firm's experience, both nationally and the state of Ohio. Obviously, the specific emphasis will be their experience with sewer revenue credits, particularly to the extent that they are sewer districts, so multi-jurisdictional entities, subject to consent decrees, obviously, would be helpful, right? In terms of experience placing debt with respect to that. Then we obviously want to consider firms that have a history with the county and have performed in the past. What's that relationship been like? Other qualifications include, you know, what's your financial position? We already talked about that, have the capacity to underwrite bonds and a proven willingness to do so. That's also very important. Marketing and distribution, which I didn't put on here, but that's something else that we'll be paying a lot of attention to. Their really ability to place bonds broadly across the investor marketplace. Experience and qualifications of the personnel that they have assigned, that matters a lot, both the main banker as well as the main underwriter, the person who's actually on the phones with a potential investor selling your bonds, the quality of the statements. And we've also asked for references. And once the pool is established, we talked about this, the suggested term is five years. The guiding principles is that we will try to establish a pool and we'll think about the number of firms in the pool based on two things. One, the quality of the responses that we get from this process. But two, also in consideration of how many transactions we actually anticipate doing over the next five years, with the guiding principle being that we want every firm to have an opportunity to do something. That does not mean they're going to run it. That's not going to happen. But we want to have enough firms in the pool that we have an opportunity, all things going as planned, for them to be at least on one transaction over the course of that five-year period. Being in the pool is not a guarantee to have a, to be on a transaction, but it's an opportunity. And that's, I think, those are the rules of the road. That is what will get communicated. And that's how we'll plan to move forward. Any questions on that?
Madam President, yes, I have a question. Yes, thanks, Bethany. This has been very helpful. Can you just go back on the pool? So once you're in the pool, then your firm will decide, or who decides if those in the pool will get an opportunity? Or is there a board? Or how does that go?
What I would suspect, and Jeff, John can correct me if I'm wrong here, is based upon the next transaction. So in this case, it'll be sales tax and it'll be, you know, say around a $50 million transaction. We would certainly intend to make recommendations to you to say, okay, we probably need, I'm just making this up. We'll deliberate on this a little bit more, but three to four firms, you'll have one book-running senior manager. So we'll need to pick one kind of chief firm. We're happy to make suggestions to kind of help you guys think through that. We're also happy just to name a team, but usually it's a collaborative process with John and Jeff. And obviously, I presume that's informed by any feedback that you guys provide as well. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's, I'm just trying to, so once you do this RFP for the firm and they qualify to be in the pool. And then when the opportunity to do underwriting, do they bid? That's what I'm trying to say, is there another?
Oh, no.
Basically, you sit down and say, based on what we, you know, your background or what have you, we think these two firms or this firm.
Yeah. And I think it's going to come, I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off. I think it's going to come down to a couple of things. So once you're in the pool, as we kind of move forward, we'll do this first transaction, who's kind of best equipped to do this first? How many firms do we need once and who's best equipped to serve in whatever role? We'll talk about that with Jeff and John, come to a conclusion, do that. The next transaction, we will figure out, and let's just say, because it's probably likely, it's a sewer revenue transaction. Are there firms better equipped to lead a sewer revenue credit or serve as a, in some other role in a sewer revenue syndicate? Are there firms that haven't had an opportunity yet? These are the types of things that will come into consideration. How many do we need? That's going to be a function of the size of the transaction. If it's 50 million, you don't need as many as if it's 100 or 150 million. So all of those things, it really is transaction-specific because the type of firms you need, the experience that they need to be able to bring to the table, the number of firms you need for the underwriter syndicate, all that's going to be driven, it's going to be driven largely by the particulars of the transaction. It's also going to be driven by the market environment at that time. And I think you were alluding to the question of fees. We purposely not, or I shouldn't say purposely, we didn't have a conversation about it. But typically in request for qualifications, you don't ask for them to submit a proposal. One of the parts of our job is to, and we're in the market three or four times, three to five times a day as a firm nationally. We're a national firm, the number one rated firm in the country, or ranked firm in the country. And so we have a group who does nothing but work with our clients on a day-to-day basis. They would supplement our team when we get to this point on negotiated bond transactions. Why is that relevant? It's relevant because we know what the takedowns are for all the deals that we work on. And so when we get to the point of negotiating transit fees with, on your behalf, with the underwriting firm, we're going to take all that data that we have from every other transaction that we worked on across the country and say, here's what the market is, and use that and inform that in terms of our negotiation. We're very much in a seller's market right now, which means you have the advantage, which means underwriters discount, which is what their fees are called, are narrow on a relative basis. Although it certainly fluctuates depending upon market environment and so on and so forth. So those are the types of things that on a transaction-by-transaction basis, we would be working with Jeff and John, Holly, depending upon the specifics of the transaction, to walk through and negotiate on your behalf. Thank you. Okay, so the schedule, we are going to, all goes well, release this on June 1. And we will give them the potential response to the opportunity to ask questions. We'll get back to them with answers. The RFQ will be due on June 28. So we're giving them, I think, is a really good amount of time to respond and put their best foot forward. We will have an internal committee. I think that's right now, John, myself and Bond Counsel, myself and my colleagues in Bond Counsel. And we'll come up with a recommendation by July 14. And then I believe the discussion's intended, if there is a staff meeting and/or at the next commissioner meeting, that would be on the 27th and 29th of July. And we are hopeful pending your approval on July 29th that we, so we'll come to you with a pool. Also, I suspect come to you with a recommendation for the syndicate for the sales tax bonds, because the goal would be to start those right away. So you approve Thursday, the 29th. We're hitting the ground running on the transaction Monday, the 2nd of August. That's the plan, at least. Finally, so what is this sales tax transaction? It's very good news. So you issued bonds back in 2011 to refund for economic savings, or refinancing, just like your refinance or mortgage. You have with some limitations, the ability to do that with respect to your debt. And so we are looking at refinancing the Series 2011 bonds. They originally issued back in 2011 in the amount of $72.7 million. You paid off some of that debt. And we will be refunding the 2022 through 2032 maturities. That totals about $59.7 million worth of debt. They are available to be called or to be refunded on 12/1/2021. The peculiarities of tax law allows to do that up to 90 days in advance. So that's kind of our schedule. We'll, I think, we'll probably be closing on these bonds about 30 days before then, so late October. Why are we doing this? Because the interest rates today, relative to the interest rate you're paying on those bonds, is significantly lower. So you have an opportunity to realize economic savings on the amount of that. And this is obviously going to change until we actually execute. So we get to market on that particular day of pricing. But based upon current market conditions, it's about $16 million in present value savings. So that's about 27% of the refunded par. That's a huge number. So it's a great opportunity. And the savings is not going to be level just because of the way the refunded bond principal is laid out. But it'll average and it'll be less in the first year. Just want to flag that. But it averages about, again, based upon these presumed savings levels, which will change until we execute in September, but approximates $1.4 million a year. And that's all I have for you. Like I said, there's a whole bunch of other information. You get bored. Or if you're a nerd like me and find this stuff fascinating, call me and we can talk.
Oh, thank you so much, Ms. Pugh. I think you took a copulated subject and simplified it, but also it was very comprehensive. So I thank you so much. I don't know if my colleagues have any additional questions. Sounds, looks like they're silent, so I'll take that as no. But it's just hard to believe that you have 20 years history in this field. You don't even, you don't look much over 20.
You are too kind.
But thank you so much for all your hard work. I'm glad that we've had you all this time and the great decisions that have been made, not only in finance, but with your company. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move forward to our next item. Hearing to consider the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And our county administrator is going to kind of tee it up for us. And then I will give some guidelines on those that are on the line that would like to speak.
Well, thank you, Madam President. And I'm just going to go through a very brief tee-up on this. I gave a much more in-depth presentation at the board meeting on Thursday. But I'm going to keep this very brief because I know we have a lot of people on the line who want to provide some input to the board. So Bridgette is going to run the presentation for me here. But as you said, Madam President, this is a hearing to discuss the administration's recommendation on a spending plan for our American Rescue Plan dollars. First of all, as we have done back with the CARES Act, the administration has recommended four bins of spending for the American Rescue Plan. The county has received $158 million from the American Rescue, or the Fiscal Recovery Funds associated with the American Rescue Plan. We've received the first tranche of that amount. We've received $79 million last week. So we are now, in fact, I think it's next week, we have an item before the board to begin appropriating that first tranche of money. So we actually have spending authority. After reviewing Treasury's guidance and some of the frequently asked questions that have come out, we put the, some recommendations into four bins. And I should just say right off the bat that the administration's recommendations on this are in many cases, not all, but in many cases. And I should just say right off the bat that the administration's recommendations on this are um, in many cases, not all, but in many cases, very general. Um, for instance, as we get into things like housing and workforce development, we have purposefully kept the recommendations general. We have um, unlike the CARES Act, we have approximately five years to obligate and spend uh, these dollars. Um, and so we want to make sure that the decisions we are making on how to spend them um, is uh, are, are decisions that five, 10, 15 years down the road, that we can look back at this once in a generation opportunity and say that we did this right. And if that takes a little bit more time to get the specifics in place, I think it's, it's time well spent. We certainly know that there is need in the community. We have no intention of taking a day longer than is necessary to, to figure out the right way to spend the dollars. Um, but in some of these program areas, they are huge community questions. And we want to make sure that after the board uh, provides uh, its approval on a plan and a general spend, in, in general spending levels, that we have the opportunity to, to go and put together a more specific plan that we would then um, bring back for, for board approval. So specifically, the, the four bins that we uh, have uh, recommend to the board uh, are strengthening public health infrastructure, stabilizing county finances, addressing negative economic impacts, and addressing community infrastructure. Uh, Bridgette, if you want to flip? Um, under strengthening public health, essentially, this is the bin that we put aside. Um, under the, under the thinking that, again, 10 years from now, 15, 20 years, whenever and if uh, we ever uh, face another instance like COVID-19, we feel that the public has the right to expect that given this once in a generation allocation of resources, that we would have used those dollars to um, uh, to seal up any, any gaps uh, in the, in the system, uh, to strengthen the system, to enhance our resiliency as a community. So that if, in fact, we experience this a next time, we are much better prepared uh, to, to face it at that point in time. And that we strengthen our infrastructure to make sure that we are um, better prepared at that point in time. So everything from addressing uh, public and private health infrastructures, addressing mental health systems, making sure that we uh, reach out into disproportionately impacted communities uh, and doing outreach to address health disparities and, and vulnerable and minority communities um, are all a part of this. As is the specific recommendation of uh, of a capital project to assist the county and the city uh, with the relocation of the, of the gun range, given its uh, impacts uh, on the surrounding communities from a uh, uh, for the, one of the things that the uh, the ARP is big on is um, creating healthy childhood environments. Uh, and so we felt this project fit uh, specifically into that um, uh, into that category. Bridgette? Uh, stabilizing county finances, we allocated 37 million dollars towards this, which includes some revenue replacement, given the revenue impacts to the county from COVID, um, uh, some facility improvements. Um, uh, looking at issues of premium pay for eligible uh, uh, workers uh, who spent a lot of last year um, uh, working directly in a situation that put them, themselves at greater risk uh, for contracting COVID by the nature of their, of their work, looking at some county staffing needs, as well as making sure that EMA operations um, are strengthened, especially as it relates to the purchase uh, and distribution of personal protective equipment, vaccine distribution, et cetera. Bridgette? Uh, addressing negative economic impacts is the largest category of our recommendation. It's 71 million dollars. Um, the largest component of that falls into housing, production, preservation, protection, uh, as well as a program of mortgage assistance, which we did not do under the CARES Act. Uh, so uh, uh, the largest portion of, of our economic impact category, it does relate to housing, as well as workforce uh, investment and making sure that we are eliminating barriers to getting people back into the workforce, retraining people where we can uh, target that retraining. And like I said, addressing some of the barriers such as childcare uh, to getting people back into the workforce. Uh, we also have some money uh, set aside for, or recommended to be set aside for things such as small business um, uh, assistance, as we have done with the CARES Act, working with the hospitality industry, as well as uh, funding for arts and cultural assistance. Bridgette? And finally, we have uh, a category for enhancing community infrastructure. The American Rescue Plan is very specific about the infrastructure that they deem uh, eligible. And they uh, it is very heavily focused around the issue of broadband and making sure uh, that from a, an accessibility and infrastructure and a quality of service perspective, uh, that uh, counties have the ability to use these funds uh, to support the uh, the build out of quality broadband services for all of the communities and all the populations within uh, within the county. Uh, we've also put some funding aside for targeted sewer and stormwater issues. Um, uh, those projects to be uh, determined later, but uh, we, it was allowable by uh, the uh, American Rescue Plan as we put some of those dollars aside. I should just also indicate that um, the rep, back on the issue of revenue replacement, uh, the revenue replacement that flows through uh, from the American Rescue Plan allocation. Um, the Treasury Department guidance does not allow those dollars to sit uh, in a, to build up a fund balance. So we have recommended uh, in our plan, some uh, direct capital projects uh, to invest in as well, including uh, EMA and 911 uh, infrastructure, the completion of some of our uh, public infrastructure uh, on the banks, uh, some IT and cybersecurity infrastructure within county buildings, uh, as well as some uh, road and park infrastructure as well. Uh, and all of those open for board uh, discussion as well. Um, I believe at this time, uh, Bridgette has placed into the chat, for those who uh, wish to access it, the uh, the patient online of the full narrative of the administration's recommendation. Uh, we went through a very high level summary uh, in this presentation, but there is a 20-page or so narrative out there, which goes into much more depth on this. Uh, we also have another public hearing coming up on Thursday, the 27th at 1:00 PM. Um, and with that, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you. I wanted to keep this relatively brief so we could get to public comment, but I will, uh, I'll turn it over to you and certainly um, available to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Jeff, so much. And um, are there any questions from the board? Um, I just wanted to thank you so much. I just wanted to mention that we, the board has received numerous uh, emails uh, as it relates to priorities that uh, people and agencies and businesses have, and they will be placed in the record for consideration. So we thank all of those who have sent in emails. Um, so we'll just move forward, uh, and I have some simple ground rules uh, at the beginning. And um, please use your name so it's easy to call on you. If you don't want to use your real name, put in some identifier so we'll know uh, who you are. And it'll be, if it's Lisa, put a F or a G, so we don't have so many Lisas. Um, please click on raise hand if you'd like to speak and we will call on you in the order in which you raise your hand. Please mute all other audio before speaking. Using multiple devices can cause an audio feedback. When called upon, unmute yourself or dial star six on your phone. Please limit your remarks to two minutes. You'll hear, hear a bang, a, a bell at two minutes. And please, we, if you respect the others that are waiting, uh, to end your comments at that time. Um, and after the comments have been given, the microphone for the speakers Zoom profile will be muted. So um, our board is anxious and excited about uh, hearing what you have to say. And we certainly, we wanted to make sure we had an evening public hearing for those who are not able to make it during the day. So why don't we just get started, Bridgette?
Thank you, Madam President. First up, we have Vanessa Freitag, followed by Anne Gerhart, followed by Dr. Stuart Wright. Vanessa, you are unmuted on my end.
Great. Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Madam President, Commissioners. Um, I am the For- Foresee for Children CEO. My name's Vanessa Freitag. Uh, two core parts of our work, I think, sync up with what you're discussing today. We work with childcare programs, helping them with both their uh, business fundamentals to be successful, as well as helping them with their quality educational practices. And we also work with parents, working parents, helping them find childcare that meets their works, uh, work schedule needs. That means we're working with uh, over 900 childcare programs throughout Hamilton County. And I'm here today to just, uh, first of all, thank you for including childcare as a component of what you're looking at and to just give you a minute's overview of where that stands in our county. Um, certainly childcare is more than a small business and most of them are small privately owned businesses. Most are women owned and actually most are minority owned. But they're actually the workforce behind the workforce. So every child that is in care, um, their parent is at work. And where we are today in Hamilton County is, we definitely suffered additional losses in childcare programs, particularly childcare programs that take care of children whose parents may be getting help, publicly funded childcare uh, from the state of Ohio. And certainly you've seen that Ohio as a state has been doing some things to assist childcare. But what I would tell you is, we have an enormous need to stabilize childcare in this county and uh, a need to actually grow it. Not only have we lost about 9% just in this past year of childcare programs that uh, assist publicly funded families, but we've actually lost about 150 childcare programs in the last three years in our county. So, you know, short little math on that, if on average they served 20 children, that's 3,000 childcare spots. So I would just conclude with um, letting you know anecdotally, as we helped parents pre-pandemic, we would make, you know, a half a dozen calls to assist them in finding a slot or several slots for their children. We are now regularly calling 15, 20, as many as 30 childcare programs, just to help one family find childcare so they can go back to work. So I certainly urge you to look deeply at that childcare component. It will be one of the critical barriers, as you said, um, to helping parents go back to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Anne Gerhart. Anne, you're unmuted on my end.
Hi, I'm Anne Gerhart. Thank you for letting me speak. I have worked hard at Quover for more than five years. I pay taxes and I'm in a union. I'm here to advocate for people with disabilities who want to live on their own in the community. I am planning to move to a dad forever home in Anderson with my friend Isabel. I will be able to live independently because the house will have technology to support us and keep us safe. Many people with disabilities in Hamilton County want to live on their own and have jobs and friends. They might need some help to do that. And they need a house they can afford. With people's disabilities belong out in their communities. They should have a chance to live on their own. They make Hamilton County a better place to live. Please pass the motion to approve that forever home project and bring affordable housing. Affordable housing to people like me. The county will be better for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
And I cannot do this without your help. And thank you Denise for being here too.
No, thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Stephen, or Stuart Wright.
Good evening, uh, President Semenro Dumas and Vice President Reese and Commissioner Drew House. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make comments on the uh, concept plan for ARP rescue funding that was just released there May 19th. My name is Stuart Wright, I'm one of the emergency physicians here at UC Health and one of these associate medical officers as well. We'd like to share our screen if we could, just for a very few number of slides to keep us on track. We appreciate the uh, difficulty you guys are going to have making decisions on how that. He is the, as the uh, COVID-19 Zone 3 leaders for the Ohio COVID response. Um, we're particularly pleased to see that there's a prioritized investment of 6 million for uh, to address emergent needs, long-term funding for community resiliency. Um, just to level set where we are, I think all, all of you probably know this, of course, we're the Level 1 Trauma Center in the city. We're uh, for adults, that is, children's obviously being next door to us. We're the Burn Center, the Comprehensive Stroke Center. We're particularly proud of our emergency department, which represents the first emergency medicine training program in the country founded in 1970. And because of that, we're able to attract uh, physician talent, student talent from all over the country uh, into our center. Uh, if you were to stand in our emergency department today outside as a patient, you would see the two entrances listed here on the right side. The walk-up entrance on the top, as you can see, somewhat modest, as well as the large overhang that many people are, are aware of, that the ambulances can turn around in, that represents our ambulance bay. And if you were to turn around from that exact spot behind, you'd see a large construction area. And you're going to see this in the next two to three years. Uh, UC Health is remaking the Clifton Campus with a large investment, including a $60 million new emergency department that you're staring at here. If you look at the ambulance entrance to the right, we'll go to the next slide and we'll show you three projects. So the next couple of slides that we think will really improve our resiliency as a community uh, for any public health needs that may arise over the coming years. This body, building in front is the new ED. You can see the large critical care tower that currently is standing in the background. And this very modest looking canopy that the ambulances are under represents a big departure for us. This is going to have excellent throughways for our ambulances coming down Goodman. That's going to be converted into a one-way street with exit up Highland. Uh, and what looks like just a simple canopy, if we go to the next slide, will actually have walls that will drop down from the roof uh, that will allow us the capability to have uh, a separate facility for mass decontamination. So appropriate heating, appropriate lighting, appropriate showering, and then collection of any contaminated water beneath the street surface and so on. That will represent uh, a singular investment in our community. Secondly, our second project, you'll see this is now a blueprint you're looking down upon of our new ED. All the areas to the right where the ambulances are at the bottom of the screen represents new construction that you just saw from the outside. And the area that's got the dark black circle around it on the left, the square there, represents our current emergency department, or at least most of it, that's going to be heavily renovated. Uh, our new project is to make that entire area that's, that's squared out negative airflow. Meaning that if patients come in with highly contagious viruses or whatnot, since we're experiencing now, that whole area can be sealed from the rest of the department and the rest of the hospital. The air coming into that section will be vented out through the roof, uh, so as not to contaminate the patient next door or the staff that we have working there uh, or otherwise. And the final project, we'd like to introduce, this is that ambulance turnaround canopy uh, that we showed in the first scenes. Uh, the idea here is that this will be walled in and, and be made into a very nice multi-use space to include a waiting space for patients as they enter our facility, but can be rapidly turned into a number of things. Uh, it could be a, a mass casualty receiving station. Uh, it could be turned into a primary care space with appropriate electricity, medical gases and so forth, hidden in the wall spaces uh, or a command center for our EMS and uh, police colleagues as need be. Again, we think this type of a large facility will represent its only facility in the region of this type. And again, contribute uh, greatly to our resiliency as a community. Um, it's our, uh, thanks very much for the opportunity to testify uh, tonight. Uh, and we look forward to forming that public partnership, public private partnership uh, with all three levels of government to make these three projects come to life.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Wrighton, and for all that you and your colleagues do, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Saman Maria, Representative, followed by Laura Bruner.
Hi, my name is H.J. Musser. I'm the President and CEO of Santa Maria Community Services and I appreciate the time to speak with you, Madam President and Commissioners. Uh, I'm also a board member on the Human Services Chamber uh, of Hamilton County Board of Directors. And uh, so I'm here to speak to you about uh, about the plan. Uh, we uh, on the board urge you to support the county administrator's proposal for spending the ARP funds to expand affordable housing and strength, strengthen human services, those two areas in particular. We know that these investments will help lower uh, income residents and people of color recover personally and economically from the pandemic. These are residents who, as you know, have been the most impacted by COVID-19. Santa Maria Community Services, my organization, is based in Price Hill, but we serve residents from all over Hamilton County. Uh, last year, 39% of our families served were African-American and 39% Hispanic, meaning almost 80% of our, of our service population was people of color. 99% of them are below the poverty level. We urge also that the funding be as flexible as possible. I'm glad. We urge also that the funding be as flexible as possible. I'm glad that Mr. Aludo mentioned the goal of ironing out the details of how the money would be spent over time to make sure it's spent in the best way possible. Santa Maria strengthens families from all over. As I said, we serve the western half of Hamilton County with out-of-school youth through the WEOA CCMEP program with Job and Family Services and the SWOoR Web. We provide health and wellness services, particularly focused on immigrants and people of color, workforce development, early childhood education, immigrant outreach, and youth development services. So a wide range of services for families to strengthen them. Would we be allocated some of these one-time funds? They would support our need for improved and integrated facilities that can better serve families as well as an improved data tracking system to track the results of these families as we help them move on a path towards self-sufficiency. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Musser.
Up next, we have Laura Brunner, followed by Kurt Reber.
Good evening, Madam President, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Laura Brunner, the President of the Port. Housing affordability is a national challenge. Here in Hamilton County, nearly 49,000 of the 341,000 households are severely cost burdened, pay more than 50% of their income toward housing costs. There is great disparity in home values across the county. In Lincoln Heights, the median home value is just $83,000. When prices are that low, speculators purchase and rent at high costs, increasing the affordability challenge. And it's perhaps one reason that homeownership has declined by 10% since 2009 in the county. We agree with conclusions like those in the Housing Our Future Task Force report. There are simply not enough safe, quality homes to meet demand. Solutions include creating new housing, preserving existing housing units, and protecting vulnerable residents from housing insecurity. We call this the ecosystem of housing stability. The Port and our managed entities, the Lamb Bank and the HERC, address this challenge in multiple ways, including expanding quality, move-in-ready housing stock across a range of price points critical to keeping housing affordable. Our goal is to bring vitality back to these communities. Six homes redeveloped by the HERC in Evanston in the last two years were income-restricted homes selling at an average of $150,000. The HERC has done over 33 homes since 2015. This year, the HERC will break ground on its first new construction homes in the Village of Lincoln Heights and plans to expand into a number of new communities, including Mount Healthy and the Village of Silverton, helping to build generational wealth for more Hamilton County families. With the rising cost of construction, creating affordable housing is more difficult than ever. Nonetheless, making progress toward an ecosystem of housing stability is more important than ever. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Brunner.
Next up, we have Kurt Reber, followed by Susan Brown Knight.
Good evening. This is Kurt Reber. I'm the President and CEO of the Free Store Food Bank. I want to first thank President Dumas and the Commissioners for your support of our food outreach efforts during the pandemic. It has been exceptionally challenging. If you imagine the when we saw one in seven of our neighbors dealing with food insecurity, that has now created about one in five of our neighbors. In Hamilton County alone, almost 115,000 of our neighbors are dealing with food insecurity. That represents over 14% of our Hamilton County groups. And we've got 44% of our neighbors are above the threshold for SNAP assistance. And that's one thing that has been drawing families to our pantry network throughout the tri-state area, but most importantly in Hamilton County. Free Store Food Bank is also a member of the Hamilton County Human Services Chamber and we appreciate and applaud the Commission's thoughtfulness as far as looking at the supporting the childcare, supporting food assistance, supporting the emergency rental assistance. What we're also doing here at Free Store is that we are providing the emergency rental assistance, transportation, and our job training program. Our Lift the Tri-State Program, as well as our Sensei Cooks Program have been exemplary models, actually national models, that have been replicated across the Feeding an American Network. It allows us to strengthen families, allow them to earn a living wage. Our graduates from our Lift program are earning between $18 and $20 an hour, many with full benefits. And our culinary students are coming out of our Cooks program that's been going on for over 22 years now has been, they've been getting jobs in the $14 to $16 an hour wage rate as well. What we're looking for right now is basically the support that we need to reach the communities of disproportionately impacted by this pandemic. And we know that this is a transformational, once-in-a-generation approach, an opportunity that you all have in front of you. We appreciate your guidance and direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reber.
Next up, we have Susan Brown Knight, followed by James Zimmerman.
Good evening and thank you, Madam President, Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Dre House. Also, thank you for your leadership, support, and steadfastness throughout this pandemic. My name is Susan Brown Knight. I am CEO of LAD. We are a 45-year-old agency based in Hamilton County. We were founded by mothers who wanted more for their children with developmental disabilities than institutionalization. A small fact many do not know is that Orient, the state's largest penitentiary, was upgraded to a prison after first being built to warehouse people with developmental disabilities. As LAD often works with people for the entirety of their adulthood, we support many survivors of Orient. At LAD, we have a long track record of realizing real and meaningful outcomes for people who in many ways are some of our community's most marginalized citizens. As you heard from Xavier University last month, over the past four years, LAD has developed a desperately needed affordable housing model that includes tech-enabled home and community supports in single-family homes on different blocks, but in close proximity to each other to realize staffing efficiencies. Today, your budget includes building three additional homes within the county. These single-family homes provide long-term, stable, affordable housing to those in need and showcase to the community a cutting-edge service model that harnesses the power of technology not to make our lives more complex, but to actually make the lives of people who utilize this service, like Anne, better and more independent. COVID showed us that smaller settings are not only better for community integration, but also safer. We have come a long way from the days of Orient, but there is still so much work to do. Together, we are building back stronger than ever, creating a community that can grow, adapt, and include us all. Thank you for your continued support for our Forever Home Project, and I look forward to the opportunity to work together.
Thank you, Ms. Brown Knight.
Thank you. Next up, we have James Zimmerman, followed by Kristen Trimplin.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, James Zimmerman here. Thank you, Madam President and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here in my capacity as Board Chair for Arts Wave. I want to say thank you to the county administration for including funding for the arts and the recommendation for the county's investment of American Rescue Plan funds. And just wanted to take a minute and share my thoughts on the importance of funding to the arts as we emerge from this pandemic. As I suspect you know, the arts in our region have been devastated by the pandemic. Over $130 million had lost revenue due to government-mandated shutdowns. The arts were one of the first industries hit by COVID-19, had to close venues and museums last March. And although we're emerging from this pandemic now, happily, they'll be one of the last to recover. We have signs of hope. We're happy to see museums and venues open throughout our county. But in order to really capitalize on that, we need real dollars to help our arts institutions restart successfully, to hire staff, to prepare venues, to develop new artistic and community partnerships that are going to be necessary in a post-COVID world. The arts has been a real strength of our community for a long time. And this is a place, in my view, that government dollars can really make a difference to help our community emerge from the pandemic stronger than ever. Arts Wave has been around for a long time in a capacity as a convener of arts organizations and a fundraiser and a and a provider of arts funding. And we stand ready to assist in any helpful way that we can to ensure that these dollars are productively and equitably invested to restart Hamilton County's community, including arts community, and to help bring renewed vibrancy for all of our residents. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and thank you for the support of the arts in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Up next, we have Kristen Trimplin, followed by Diane Egbers.
Thank you so much. My name's Kristen Trimplin. I'm the President and CEO of Women Helping Women. And I am also a member of the Board of the Human Service Chamber, as is our agency, a member of the Chamber. Like HA said before me, CEO of Santa Maria, I am here to urge support for the county administrator's proposal for spending American Rescue Plan dollars to expand affordable housing and strengthen human services. Because here's the bottom line, to be super frank. This is a policy move in the budget that will center Black and Brown women and families who have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. This is why Women Helping Women advocates for spending to be flexible as possible, to trust nonprofit agencies like Women Helping Women, because here's the other bottom line. Our mission is what drives us. Our mission is to prevent gender-based violence and to empower all survivors. You know far too well, the pandemic has decimated our county as it relates to survivors. Last year, 300% increase in domestic violence homicide. 300%, that means 16 women, 13 of them were Black women. 13 women were killed last year from domestic violence. And it hasn't stopped in this county. The need for survivors to have access to services has only increased, and I'm sorry, but we are losing the fight with lives being lost. And here's the other piece of information that we're losing the fight. While increase has gone up for lots of human services, specifically but for survivor services, safety funding is going down and there's divestment. We just found out last week, we're losing $200,000 from the Victims of Crime Act, like 350 other victim service agencies across the state. So American Recovery Act dollars now will help not only so many human services who are meeting the needs, trying of expanded services and increased need, but it'll help our agency to hold this space while people are losing their lives. They need access to services and our agency, like others, is being gutted from financial support that is meant for victims of crime. With your support with the American Rescue Plan, we'll keep our advocates on the front lines. We'll keep going to courts. We'll keep going on scene. We'll keep going to workplaces. We'll keep showing up in the community. Survivors deserve to be heard, supported, and on our county's American Recovery Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trimplin.
Next up, we have Diane Egbers, followed by Ed Lee. Diane, you are unmuted on my end.
She's still muted, yeah. Diane, if you can unmute yourself.
We can come back to Diane. Ed Lee, we have unmuted you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ed Lee, CEO and President of Habitat Humanity of Greater Cincinnati. We're excited that Hamilton County is helping the Housing Our Future recommendations become reality with the proposed $40 million in funding supporting the key Housing Our Future strategies. The process that created Housing Our Future was comprehensive and inclusive and provides a solid framework for the county's investment in housing. Habitat Humanity has been building, rehabbing, repairing homes in the tri-state for 35 years. In that time, we've enabled nearly 700 low-income, hard-working families to enjoy the benefits of homeownership. In addition to the homeownership model we are best known for, Habitat Humanity helps veterans stay safely in their homes with repairs like roof replacement, HVAC replacement, and bathtub-to-shower conversion. We also offer classes for first-time homebuyers in personal finance and home maintenance. And we partner with nonprofits and communities on beautification repairs during our Rock the Block volunteer events. We have partnered with Lachlan, Lincoln Heights, and Springfield Township on facade repairs and community projects to extend the impact with Habitat for Humanity beyond the new homes we have constructed in these communities. Hamilton County has been a key funder and partner with Habitat in West College Hill, Lachlan, Lincoln Heights, and Gulf Manor. Thank you for this opportunity to share our support of the proposed allocation of $40 million to push the Housing Our Future strategies into motion. We look forward to continuing to partner with the Commissioners and Hamilton County Development Staff and the Focus Communities as we all work to protect, preserve, and provide affordable housing units and provide mortgage assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Next up, Diane Egbers, followed by John Schreider.
Thank you, Madam President and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. Your focus on strengthening public health and specifically mental health is near and dear to my heart. In 2015, we lost our son Grant to suicide. And in 2016, I founded Grant Us Hope, which is serving K-12 mental health needs in the state of Ohio, specifically urban and suburban schools in Hamilton County. We're in 150 schools total, serving 400,000 students. Since that time, mental health needs have only increased and due to COVID, that has become dramatic. It used to be that 20% of our kids suffered with mental health. And now with the pandemic, the numbers are estimated at 33%. One in three of our students are now suffering as a result of this previous year. The Grant Us Hope program, Hope Squad, is unique in that it's continuous peer-to-peer support in our schools. There's a three-year high school curriculum, three-year junior high curriculum. And we're one of only three organizations in the state of Ohio recommended for suicide prevention programs in 2021. Responding to the mental health crisis of our kids right now is more urgent than ever. The ability in Hamilton County to serve more of those needs is what these funds would make possible. We already have the support of Cincinnati Public Schools. We've been able to grant some funding for a small number of Cincinnati Public Schools, but this would really expand our services to urban youth. And that is very much a passion of ours to make sure that every child's mental health needs are supported and addressed. I appreciate your time this evening and your prioritization of suicide prevention and mental health and those things that you consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egbers, and I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Next up, we have John Schreider, followed by Holly End. John, you're unmuted on my end. There we go. John, looks like you're unmuted.
All right, thank you. Madam President and Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Dre House, I'm John Schreider. I'm speaking this evening as the Chair of Affordable Housing Advocates, which is our local affordable housing coalition. Affordable Housing Advocates has worked for many years to promote good housing, good affordable housing for all in greater Cincinnati. And we are thrilled to support the plan that you are developing to devote $40 million of rescue funds for dealing with the housing crisis. We had our monthly membership meeting today. We had our monthly membership meeting today and talked about this proposal, and I can't tell you how, the amount of enthusiasm that people were expressing for this, for this idea and plan. This is going to be a very, very big step in addressing the housing problems that I know that all of you are acutely aware of. You know, this is going to help homeowners who are struggling, it will help renters, and we probably should mention that it will also be good for our local economy and create jobs. So it's just going to be a win-win-win all the way around. I know that you are all familiar with Housing Our Future, that strategy. It was my pleasure to be on the Steering Committee and still serve in that capacity. I think that it really makes the case for the kinds of things that you're talking about doing, and I just can't say too much how strongly Affordable Housing Advocates supports this plan. We appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight and to hear from all the other people in support of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreider.
Next up, we have Holly End, followed by Tavis Forman.
Hi. Thank you so much, Commissioners. I really appreciate the time. I want to echo Diane Egber's comments about the critical and crucial need for suicide prevention and mental health for our youth right now in Hamilton County. Unfortunately, suicide is the leading cause of death in Ohio for 10- to 14-year-olds and the second-leading cause for all of our youth up to the early 20s. And as Diane mentioned, it's only increased with the pandemic. The CDC reported that prior to the pandemic, 1 in 4 of our youth considered suicide within a 30-day period, or I'm sorry, 1 in 20, and now the number is 1 in 4. And so I just want to echo the importance and the urgency of suicide prevention programming in schools and particularly those that are peer-to-peer based, like Grant Us Hope. In fact, I know that one of the students who is with us, who is utilizing the program is here with us today, and so I'm hopeful that you will get to hear from him directly, but I just wanted to urge you to please see this as the other health crisis that we have been suffering during this pandemic and to really address this with your funding, and I really, really appreciate your concern and your consideration of youth, mental health, and suicide prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ann.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tavis Forman. Tavis, for some reason, I'm unmuting you, and it's not going through. I'll keep trying, but let's go to Carrie Davis. Carrie Davis, you're unmuted.
Hello, ladies. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
First, I'd like to start off with a thank you to you, Ms. Dumas, for that issue involving the children in foster care, and I remember you telling me you couldn't sleep that night and that you were on it the next morning, and boy, was it effective. Great job, very great job. Ms. Drehouse, thank you for taking the lead on the solid waste issue and dealing with our landfills. This, too, is an environmental health issue. If you read the local studies, you will see how this makes those vulnerable populations we're all concerned with even more vulnerable when the landfills are involved. And overall, I just want to thank the Commissioners and their staff, because you guys are really the bomb. I watched your meeting last night from the 20th, and we are just so lucky to have such a professional group of people representing us. The focus on the people is what I posted on our pages. It was very refreshing, and we're grateful for all the work you did in getting us through the COVID. So now that the thank yous are out of the way, but they're sincere, one of the things I was concerned about in the presentation I watched was I didn't see any money set aside for doing a critical review of our emergency operation plan. I know from my view with Child Advocacy for Rights and Equity looking in, there were a lot of entities who were not doing what they contracted to do under the Hamilton County Emergency Operation Plan, and that I found disturbing. One of the issues that stood out was PODs, Points of Distribution. I think most anybody can tell you our Points of Distribution were very politically motivated when permitted to be determined by townships and local jurisdictions. In my community of Colrain, we had five COVID testing events in the rich white side of Colrain Avenue, and I had to throw a hissy fit to get two of them done on the east side. The west side has the money, the east side has minority populations, lower income, lower housing values, and our heat map showed that's where the biggest concentration of COVID was, and we weren't serving them. And I think that's one point in our emergency operation plan we need to address, so that never, ever, ever happens again. And who dropped the ball, and how were they given the authority to drop that ball?
Well, Ms. Davis, thank you for your comments, earlier comments. I hate to cut you off, but your time is up, and if you want to talk another time about that point of distribution, I'm sure any of the Commissioners would be willing to do that. So we want to kind of stick, we want to stick to our two-minute time limit.
Okay, well, let me give you, just throw the legal needs on the table. We needed legal services really bad also.
Okay.
And I'll stop talking.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Next up, we have CC Inspiring Service, followed by Quinn Bailey.
Madam President, Vice President Reese, and Commissioner Drehouse, thank you for the opportunity to speak. CC Inspiring Service is Doug Bolton, former publisher of The Business Courier and CEO of Cincinnati Cares. You know, the American Rescue Plan is a historic opportunity to fix a number of injustices and imbalances. I'm here to speak about one of those imbalances for which our nonprofit, Cincinnati Cares, has been working on for the last four years. Compared to a lot of metropolitan regions, including the Ohio metros of Cuyahoga and Franklin Counties, where $3 million to $5 million annually are invested by government, business, and philanthropy, the investment in Hamilton County's volunteer ecosystem has been an embarrassment. In Cleveland, for instance, there are three distinct organizations 100% focused on helping volunteers. In Cincinnati, until 2017, when our organization was created, there was no single organization responsible for the work as its sole mission, and our declining volunteer rates in Hamilton County compared to our peers showed it. For the past four years, our organization has invested more than $3 million in technology, infrastructure, and services to reverse twice the national rate of decline in volunteerism experienced in our region. We put platforms in place that make it easy for the public to find a way to help. We've built a platform helping to connect our region's volunteer leaders to nonprofit boards, and we've begun the work of helping nonprofits better engage the volunteers they do have. We request that the county use the ARP to help us create the muscle for investment in volunteer engagement from businesses and philanthropy in this region. But the good news is that through our technologies, we can do this work in Hamilton County far more efficiently and effectively than $3 million. Our application for $900,000 annually for three years will ensure the rebuilding of our platforms to overcome the pandemic's impact, the expansion of the block board platform, and the extension of our services to every active nonprofit that engages volunteers in our region. The nonprofit sector in greater Cincinnati fuels 10% of our region's economy. Research has shown that for every $1 invested in volunteerism, there is a $17 return. Surely, an investment on a small scale to benefit the entire nonprofit sector in our region is in order. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much, the representative for CC Inspiring Service. Thank you.
And Commissioners, Tavis Forman is back. Tavis, you're unmuted on my end.
Yes, thank you, and apologies, lost connection there for a moment. Good evening, Madam President and distinguished Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and again, apologies for the interruption. My name is Tavis Forman, and I serve as the Executive Director of Produce Perks Midwest. We're a Hamilton County nonprofit and serve as Ohio's lead agency administering nutrition incentive programming. Our work addresses food insecurity and chronic disease for low-income households countywide. We do this by providing direct financial resources to purchase healthy foods, specifically fruits and vegetables. We serve individuals who receive SNAP and pandemic EBT benefits, TANF-eligible households, and food insecure patients experiencing chronic disease, pregnant women, and WIC-eligible mothers. Our work is recognized nationally by the USDA and CDC, Ohio's State Health Improvement Plan, the Health Policy Institute of Ohio, and our regional community health needs assessments all recommend nutrition incentive programming as a key strategy to increase food security and improve health outcomes. Through our clinical partnerships with Mercy Health, we are serving food insecure diabetic patients and expecting mothers countywide, but notably in Forest Park within Dr. Stephen Wilson's practice. We continue to see decreases in various biometric health indicators, reductions in A1Cs, decreases in BMI. More so, over 95% of the babies born within our prescription programming met all the biometric goals as set by the Ohio Department of Health, and over 85% of the participating mothers were minority women of color. Our programming experienced a 96% increase in utilization due to the pandemic. In 2020, we generated over $3 million in healthy food purchases statewide. These dollars are going directly back into high-needs communities, stimulating local economies, and supporting healthy food purchases, specifically fruits and vegetables. Our request will fill an immediate need within our communities, expand to neighborhoods across the county, such as Lincoln Heights, and will directly support healthy food purchases. Our request is in direct alignment with Treasury guidance, and I thank you all for your time this evening and look forward to engaging with you further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forman.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Quinn Bailey, followed by Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey.
Hi. My name is Quinn Bailey, and I first want to thank you all for allowing me to speak. I am a Grant Us Hope intern and a Hope Squad member and a student within Hamilton County. As a student, I have seen struggles with mental health within other students. This year, more prevalent due to COVID restrictions and social isolations causing online school and just an overall feeling of loneliness. Hope Squads in schools give students a place to go, resources to talk, resources to talk, and referrals to other mental health support. I became interested in Hope Squad at Turpin due to my own anxiety and high number of student suicides within our community. One life lost is one too many. That one loss can affect friends, family, and communities. This is something that we must change. Grant Us Hope is a nonprofit organization that funds and initiates Hope Squads within Hamilton County. I've been fortunate enough to be an intern and have seen the passion and hard work and lifeline that this organization is providing to thousands of students. I graciously and humbly come to you and request consideration in providing funding for Grant Us Hope, as this money will go directly to saving student lives. This money will also help with mental health awareness, resources, and provide students with hope and positivity within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Next up, we have Mayor Ruby Kinsey-Mumphrey, and she's unmuted on my end, and then just wanted to ask if anybody else would like to speak, if they could please raise their hand. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Drehouse, Commissioner Dumas, Summer O'Dumas, and Commissioner Reese. I want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak this afternoon. We want to thank you for the rescue, American Rescue Plan funding on the proposal to move the Cincinnati Police Department gun range from the back door of the Village of Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn. The shooting range has been there over 70-plus years, and it's adjourned behind Marionette Terrace, where our children have had to listen to that for decades, from the time they wake up in the morning, from the time they go to school, they hear the gun noise, and through like the last, I would say, three, four years, the gun range has been, the sounds have been came to get worse. So I want to thank the Commissioners for your diligence and helping us to move the shooting range, and we know that these tax dollars that you're considering to help move the gun range, even though it's not enough, but it's putting a dent in it if you consider using those funds. I'm looking forward to the city to add in as well. We truly, truly need the gun range move. It has to go. It does affect, as I heard everyone talk about, housing and other things that are affecting the Village of Lincoln Heights. It truly is affecting the homeownership for the Village of Lincoln Heights. No one wants to listen to gun range sounds when they're trying to have dinner, when they waking up to go to work or to school, or when they go into bed at night. It does affect our revenue, even though we're a small village. It does affect our community to continue to grow. So thank you, and I really appreciate the consideration that you're giving to help fund the gun range. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Monfrey.
Madam President, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone who participated, and there is still an opportunity, if you know other agencies or businesses or the public that may want to participate this coming Thursday at 1:00, they're welcome to do so. At this point, I would like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And no further business to come before as I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes. Just want to thank all the folks that jumped on, too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.